Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We call this a meeting to order. Private City Council, Tuesday, July 16th. Ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
Major leaders, it is the citizens of America in the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O gracious God, we come now as uminous, we know how. Lord, first, we want to say thank you for being so good to each and every one of us, realizing and knowing, Lord, that we're not deserving of your goodness, but you blessed us and you show us mercy and grace anyway, and we thank you for that. We thank you for the opportunity, oh Lord, to live in the land that we live in and that we can come here and assemble here and take care of the business of this city. We pray, oh Lord, for each individual who has come here tonight, bless them, bless their families. Bless us, oh Lord, as we make these decisions, guide our tongue as we speak. We pray, oh Lord, for this country. We pray that you always, Lord, be in the midst and let each and every one of us lean and depend on you and seek your guidance for whatever situation, circumstances going on in this land, that they seek you, for you have all the answers and all the power. These and other blessings we ask in your name. Amen. Captain Clerk, will you call a row?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Sterns.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
I call this Tuesday, July 16th, 2013, council meeting to order the character trade of the money's justice, taking personal responsibility to uphold what is pure, right, and true. We have approval of minutes, public hearing and city council meeting, July 2nd. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, July 2nd. All in favor, signify by raising the right hand. And those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone in the audience like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I'm trying to speak to it tonight. I don't think everybody had a great report, but I did, and it had been through the various departments pulling together, and that's spectacular, and I don't think it would have been quite as spectacular as it was. The, as I mentioned here before, rain is a good thing, and I think we, the way we endured the rain showers that came about, I think Kelly Cook, her department and various other departments pulled that off, did an excellent job, but as I mentioned earlier, I tried to make sure, but also, as I mentioned before, we are a mechanized service-oriented organization with municipal and county providing core services, and one of those is sanitation. My focus of late has been sanitation department. Various reports you've received of late indicate that we have had some difficult, difficult, excuse me, a little tongue tie, difficulties keeping...
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
So I have a little tongue tie, a little tongue tied, but thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a report from council and special committees. Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Sterns.
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss.
Yes, sir. We'll have a public safety committee meeting next Tuesday, the 23rd, at 4:00 P.M.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. The Leisure Services Committee met on July the 9th, and the purpose of our discussion was to talk about permits for the special events that take place in the city each year, especially including the blocking of roads, the parades that we have all year long, and also what has become much more common in the city, which are the fund runs, which a lot of the churches and special organizations do. And we were discussing how these events actually affect the budget for the city, especially as they pertain to the police department, and over time, we had a great number of organizations that sponsor these fund runs and some of these other events, like blocking of the streets, show up and have a lot of input. We look forward to possibly another meeting in the near future to actually receive the rest of their input and possibly rewrite the ordinance, which was last written for our city in the early 90s. So, look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. The Finance Committee did meet this past Wednesday, and as the mayor stated, we do concur that we move forward with the items that he spoke about on tonight's agenda. With that being said, we have a report on the status of city finances from our finance director.
Everyone has a packet in front of them of the financial information minutes. First, see, as usual, is the revenue report, this for the month of June. You'll notice that most of these...
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Does any council members have any comments or questions for Mr. Mosley? Just one question, I want to make sure. I know we're getting ready for the budget, Mr. Mosley. The upcoming budget will be based on what figures? Will you be doing actual figures or...
We are, we're building the budget on this year's actual revenues, so essentially building it on the surplus, and that may increase as revenue.
Thank you. If anyone has, there'll be another question. Thank you, Mr. Mosley. We are moving to our agenda. We have a consent agenda, five items on the consent agenda. Item number one is a resolution to reappoint Caroline Horton to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority. Item number two is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weed laws to be a public nuisance in order to abatement per Friday, 11th. Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number three, to waive fee for the Tahoe County Fair Association. Number four is a resolution to set public hearing for allowance retail liquor class two, package store license for Philip Barker or Barker's Party Time. And item number five is a resolution to grant a retail table wine license, off-premise only, to Philip Barker or Barker's Jet Pep. These items are on our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by raising the right hand. The consent agenda has been accepted. Consent agenda is now open for discussion. Any discussion on any items on the consent agenda, items one through five. Discussion, all in favor of these items, signify by raising the right hand. And those items passes. We are moving to our agenda. Item number one is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the police department. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the police department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department, 2002 Chevrolet Impala. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on this ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. This is an ordinance of permanent nature. The rules must be suspended unanimously in order to be considered. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, the rules, if all in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising the right hand. The rules have been suspended on this item. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adopting, signify by raising the right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. We're to as an ordinance to surplus items from scrap metal from the urban management department. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the following items are hereby declared surplus of the urban management department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department, 150 used lawnmower blades, two used lawnmower decks. Be it further ordained that the city council of the city of Prattville instructs the mayor to sell said items as scrap metal and the proceeds be deposited into the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This also is an ordinance, rules must be suspended also. We have a motion to suspend.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and the rules have been suspended. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising the right hand, and this ordinance is adopted also. Resolution number three is to authorize a hiring of one police secretary, two, to fill a budgeted vacancy in the police department, and annual cost not to exceed $40,498. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire one police secretary, two, to fill a vacancy in that department, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed $40,498 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the police department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $40,498 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one police secretary, two, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, police department slash salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor for this resolution. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. Any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising the right hand, and this resolution is adopted also. Resolution number four is to amend the FY 2013 budget to authorize the purchase of one K-9 for the police department at a cost not to exceed $10,000. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one K-9 in the police department for police use, and whereas the cost of said K-9 will not exceed $8,500 plus $1,500 for training and handling, and whereas federal drug proceed funds will be used to purchase said K-9 and for training and handling. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that FY 2013 budget surplus is hereby decreased by $10,000. FY 2013 budget line item, police department slash capital outlay is hereby increased by $8,500, and FY 2013 budget line item, police department slash education is hereby increased by $1,500. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $10,000 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purchase of one K-9 and the cost of training and handling, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, police department slash capital outlay and education. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the city of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to complete this purchase for and on behalf of the city of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counselor Chambliss. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this resolution passes. Resolution number five is authorize the mayor to sign a one-year engagement letter with Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., for auditing services for fiscal year 2013 at a cost not to exceed $89,000. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., provided auditing services to the city of Prattville for fiscal year 2012, and whereas Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., will best serve as auditors to provide the city with the necessary expertise in this endeavor, and whereas the city of Prattville desires that the city's fiscal year 2013 audit service be awarded to the firm of Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to sign an engagement letter with Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., and funds in the amount not to exceed $77,000 for an annual audit and $12,000 for a single audit, if necessary, are hereby approved and appropriated to be paid from fiscal year 2014 general fund budget. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this item passes. Resolution number six is to amend the FY 2013 wastewater enterprise fund budget to authorize the purchase of the Rice Estate property for the wastewater department and to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for sale to purchase said property at a cost not to exceed $916,500. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the wastewater department is in need of additional acreage to apply sludge, a byproduct of treating wastewater, and whereas, excuse me, in resolution book 2012, page 146, on November the 6th, 2012, the city council authorized the mayor to negotiate the terms and conditions for the purchase of additional property for the wastewater department and report back to the city council the results of the same. And whereas, in resolution book 2013, page 84, on June 18th, 2013, the city council affirmed the intent to purchase the Rice Estate property, contingent upon the city of Prattville obtaining financing, approval, and/or resolution of the city council and approval of Judge John B. Bush, and whereas Judge John B. Bush issued an order approving the sale on July the 9th, 2013. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that fiscal year 2013 wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay is hereby increased by $916,500, with funds coming from wastewater enterprise fund reserves, as said property will become a capital asset of the wastewater enterprise fund. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $916,500 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of purchasing said property, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated in the fiscal year 2013 wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city to execute an agreement of sale and any other documents necessary for the purchase of said property. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Will there be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this resolution passes. Let's go back on that. All in favor, signify by raising the right hand. All opposed? This resolution passes. One opposed. Next item, number seven, is to declare one Vaccon combination sewer cleaner unit surplus and to authorize trade-in to Ingram Equipment Company Incorporated. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the following truck is hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department, one Vaccon VPD 3609 HAN/1000. Be it ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to trade in this unit, as is, to Ingram Equipment Company Incorporated for a trade-in value of $190,000 in conjunction with resolution 2013 pursuant to section 41-16-51B7 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counselor Striplin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chambliss. This also is an ordinance of permanent nature, so rules must be suspended also. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Bowles, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising the right hand, and the rules has now been suspended. This ordinance is now open for discussion. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this ordinance passes. Resolution number eight is to amend FY 2013 wastewater enterprise fund budget and to release funds for the purchase of a Vaccon combination sewer cleaner unit for the wastewater department at a cost not to exceed $80,852. Counselor Striplin, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Vaccon combination sewer cleaner unit, serial number 10095454, purchased by the city of Prattville in 2009, continues to overheat after numerous attempts to repair. And whereas the wastewater department had a need for a reliable and dependable sewer cleaner, and whereas Vaccon Incorporated and Ingram Equipment Company, LLC, have agreed to trade in the existing unit on a new unit, and whereas a Vaccon model PD 4212HE/1300 combination sewer cleaner unit with a Peterbilt chassis is available at a cost of $270,852, and whereas there's a trade-in credit of $190,000 on the existing unit pursuant to ordinance 2013. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that fiscal year 2013 budget line item wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay is hereby increased by $80,852, with funds coming from the wastewater enterprise fund reserves. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $80,852 for one Vaccon model PD 4212HE/1300 combination sewer cleaner unit are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Ingram Equipment Company, LLC, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2013 budget line item wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay pursuant to section 41-16-51B7 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Will there be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this resolution passes. Resolution number nine is to amend the FY 2013 budget to release funds for the purchase of one 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe from Capital Chevrolet off of state contract, contract number T191L, for the police department in the amount of $25,995.04. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe in the police department, and whereas said vehicle is available on the state contract from Capital Chevrolet, contract number T191L, for the amount of $25,995.04. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that FY 2013 police department slash equipment maintenance is hereby decreased by $12,000, and that FY 2013 budget line item, police department slash capital outlay is hereby increased by $12,000. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said funds in the amount of $25,995.04 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Chevrolet, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line item, police department slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. Will there be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by raising the right hand, and this resolution passes also. At this time, if we have comments from persons present on any item that you would like to discuss, please come forth, state your name at this time. Mayor, do you have any further comments?
No.
Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Sterns?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
Let me just say, thank you all for coming, those who have come out tonight to witness a private city council meeting. Again, as the mayor alluded to earlier, I want to take this opportunity to thank the city employees, especially with all this rain that has gone on, for what you're doing. I know it's tough out there. I want to thank this council. I have noticed through your committee assignments and through your committee work that you're diligently meeting and discussing... are diligently meeting and discussing these issues prior to our coming to City Hall. I encourage you to continue to do that, keep that open format along with the mayor, and that way we can take care of a lot of the necessary business that a lot of people don't understand, that we take care of. I do thank you, and I urge you to keep doing that, and I urge you as a citizen, if you have questions, call your council person. Thank you. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand and thirteen, at six P.M. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. This meeting is adjourned.